Good evening and welcome to the October 10th, 2017 School Committee Meeting. We're happy to have you join us. Good to see everyone. This evening's meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. East Hampton Media, Channels 191, 192, and 193 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. Superintendent Falls, we do have some announcements.
I do. The next regular school committee meetings are October 24th, November 14th, and December 12th, 2017. There are half-days of school on Thursday, October 19th, and Friday, October 20th, due to parent-teacher conferences. There is no school on Tuesday, November 7th, due to city elections and teacher professional development. There is no school Friday, November 10th, due to Veterans Day observance. There is no school Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, November 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, due to Thanksgiving break. I also have another announcement about a training for parents. A bullying prevention and policies information session is going to be held for parents and guardians of students in grades 7 through 12 at the East Hampton High School Auditorium on Tuesday, October 17th, from 7:00 in the evening until 8:30. This will be presented by our Director of Curriculum, Julian Levin, and it will be focused on what bullying is, how to facilitate conversations about bullying with your students, and district policies regarding reporting incidents of bullying and peer conflict. An information session, addressing bullying prevention and policies for parents and guardians of students in pre-K to 6 will be scheduled in November. And for community members or others who do not have children in our schools and want to receive the superintendent updates, please visit our website at www.EPSD.us and click on "Click to Subscribe" under "Latest Superintendent Update."
Thank you very much. Okay, it doesn't look as though we have any correspondence this evening or gifts to report, so we will move on to the public speak portion of our meeting. Is there anyone who would like to come and speak to the committee tonight? I guess not. Okay. So we'll move on to our subcommittee reports. Finance.
The finance subcommittee has not met, however, we are going to schedule a meeting for just before our October 24th meeting.
5:00?
At 5:00.
Very good. Policy Review Subcommittee.
Likewise, we haven't met since our last meeting, but we're working on scheduling a date.
Okay. Very good. Collaborative.
We did have our meeting, and I realized on Friday, when I went to the debates, that I'm not sure we often explain what being a part of the collaborative is. So I touched base on that Friday night, but I'll do it again because not everybody heard. When you're the liaison to the collaborative, you're actually a member of another school board. All our sending districts that belong to the collaborative have to give one member of the school committee to serve as a board, a school board for the collaborative. So we meet once a month. We do the exact same things. We look at budget and policies and programming, just as we do here. This last meeting, we did two things that were important, and that was we re-elected all of the members of our governing body, our chairs and vice chair, and our subcommittee members, because they do a fantastic job and they were willing to serve again. So we did that, and then we updated and approved some of the changes that are going to improve the assistive technology program and the occupational therapy program. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is our student representative update, and we have Victoria Dreser with us, and she is co-president of Student Council at East Hampton High School and a junior at our high school. And so, Victoria, do you have information for us on what's going on at the high school?
Yes, I do. There isn't really much going on, but on this October 16th, the French exchange students are coming from Brittany, France, and there's also a homecoming being planned, and we're thinking for a date November 3rd, but nothing is set in stone yet. There's also the upcoming play, High School Musical, which is going to be November 16th, 17th, 18th, and 19th. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sounds good. All right. Do we have an education policy update from Marissa?
Yeah, so there are two state-level things that I wanted to mention this evening. The first, I am just starting to read about, just starting to learn what it will mean for us in East Hampton, but I saw that there's been approval for a new method of evaluating local public schools in Massachusetts with the MCAS scores, and that will be in accordance with the Every Student Succeeds Act. It looks like, in addition to the MCAS scores, the system of evaluation will be looking at such things as attendance and percentage of students taking AP exams or other sort of college-level exams. And then I think it also is going to be looking, shifting away from what was the expectation that we would have achievement gaps each year, and instead looking to evaluate the assessment scores alongside other information, like socioeconomic status, or race, or English as a second language. I would be interested to learn more about it and learn from, I know Julianne has taken a look at this stuff, what it might mean for the district.
We're going to do a webinar, too.
Oh, great.
I think it's next week, so we'll have more information, we hope, after that.
Yeah. I talked with one parent who felt nervous that more data might mean more assessment-based oversight. In this case, I do wonder, excuse me, whether it actually will be useful, because we do know that socioeconomic and cultural background has a real effect on performance on standardized tests, and so if that is the measure that these overseeing bodies are using, it probably will be useful to be analyzing that data against these other student profile information. But that's great. I'll be excited to learn about that webinar.
We're looking forward to getting more information.
Great. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was from the MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, they are supporting a House Bill #324, which is lobbying to get a representative from MASC, or a school committee representative, onto the board for the Department of Education, or Elementary and Secondary Education. As we know, from when we met with a board member, that board has really got its head thinking about charter schools, promoting charter schools, working in the interest of charter schools, and so it seems like a gross oversight that there isn't already someone on that board, perspective of local public oversight of our public schools. And so I am hopeful that this would be a really good addition to that board.
And it's also my understanding, too, that they are, like we are for the schools, they're like a school committee. They act as a school committee for charter schools as well.
Right.
So they are looking at that data directly, so have their hands on it probably more than what they would with public schools.
Right.
Like, as opposed to just getting like, they're not seeing the full picture.
Yeah.
So that's great. That's great news.
Yeah. So I was thinking of maybe sending an email over to MASC and see what we can do at the local level to support their support for the bill.
Sounds good.
Great, you're going to be on that board.
I don't think so. I'm quite ready to do that. Yes. But that's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Under other, I just wanted to mention that Cindy and I met with Glenn Kuchar, Executive Director of MASC, on Friday for a brief bit while he was in town, he was in the area. And so I'll just look forward to sharing with you. We had some brief discussions, and I'll look forward to sharing that information with you. Hopefully, we can set up a work session tied to our next meeting, and we'll share with you what we learned from him.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Our superintendent's update. Superintendent Fallsby.
So as I had promised you, I would give you an update on our 10-point action plan at each school committee meeting. I have given you a document where I've put together what we've been doing, the 10 points and what we've been doing. So I'll just run through this a little bit, what we've done since the last session. So Action Step 1 is provide staff training. I did report out earlier that we provided the anti-bias training for high school and middle school staff on August 30th, and our partner for that was the Anti-Defamation League. We did bullying prevention training for all staff on August 31st. Our Director of Curriculum was our partner and who did the presentation for that. And we do do that every year. It's a requirement to do the bullying prevention training for all staff. We also have just recently done an LGBTQ presentation on best practices, current best practices in public education workshop. It was done with Jason Wheeler from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It was done for the East Hampton High School staff as part of Desi's Safe Schools Program. And number two was to provide student training. So while Mr. Wheeler was here to do the training for our staff, he also did training for the GSA, the Gender Sexuality Alliance, students on that same day, October 3rd. The other student training that we've been talking about is the SPIRIT Program, which is Student Problem Identification and Resolution of Issues Together. On September 27th, we met with the representatives, the trainers, from the Department of Justice Community Service Relations Service, and we have a tentative date for that training, two days, it's two half-days, November 2nd and November 3rd. And we're hoping to confirm that shortly, to make sure that everybody's available, who needs to be available.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
Or should I hold my questions for the end? Someone at the forum, actually, I think, asked about this item and what that will look like for when students are in conflict, or if a student does experience some kind of bias incident with another student. Will there be some kind of resolution that occurs?
During the training?
Is that which?
Just in an ordinary day, if a student has a conflict, a bias-related conflict with another student, will they have peer mediation or some sort of conflict resolution?
Oh, so I can talk about that a little bit later on.
Okay, great.
Because I do talk about bias-motivated incidents. So if we could just wait, and I'll talk about that then.
I have just-
Sure.
-one question about that, about that meeting. Do you want to talk about it after, or do you want to-
No, we can talk about that now.
Can you just, yeah, because I'm curious what that, like, what the meeting entailed, and what your experience was from it.
I'd be happy to talk about it. It was Muhammad Ali Salam and Walter, and I don't remember his last name, but they're the two trainers from the Department of Justice. And they came and they met with Principal Burke, Assistant Principal Welson, our Director of Curriculum, Julian Levin, and myself. And they had a PowerPoint for us, and they explained, and they've done this training all across the state. Walter's original placement was in Alabama, and then from there, he was moved to Washington, DC. So they're very skilled. I mean, they've been doing this for a lot of, a long time. And as I say, they do it all across the country. So they wanted to know about our high school and what our needs were, and we talked about different models. So essentially, what they do is they do a kind of whole group, well, actually, let me back up a little bit. They look for facilitators from the community, people who might have facilitation skills, who might be able to help us facilitate some of the individual student groups. And once we find our facilitators, they do a training of the facilitators to work with the groups of students. And then they have different groups of students identified to work with the facilitators in this training, and I don't have all of the details on it, but out of the training, we look for student leaders who can continue to be, would be similar to what we've had before in our peer leaders, to take active leadership roles in our high school. So I think it's going to be an excellent training. As I say, it's two half-days, so it's some comprehensive training, and I say this is a very well-known program across the country.
Nancy, this is the program that I highly sought after, and this was one of the programs that they bumped us right up to the-
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. We went and visited with them in April, I believe it was, of last year. And they told us about this program, and we said, "Well, it sounds wonderful." And they said there's usually a waiting list for these programs, but, you know, because of the issues that we're facing, they would bump us up and put us in as soon as possible. But then while the investigations were ongoing, we were asked to not do any trainings, asked by the Attorney General's Office to not put anything into place, so we had to put it on hold until after the investigations were completed, because they wanted the trainings to occur after that. So as soon as we were able to, that's when we got in touch with the, well, Muhammad Ali Salam has been my contact, so I got in touch with him, and then he got in touch, we'd need the two trainers. And that, September 27th was the first date they could meet with us, so.
And so is it a similar process, looking for facilitators, as it is for the stakeholder committee?
No, it actually will be slightly different, because we're looking for people with facilitation skills.
Okay.
And what we'll probably do is put a message out, you know, to see who might be interested, and then they can get more information on what it would involve, and, yeah, so if any of you were interested.
And do you know when you're going to be sending that message out? Because if you're doing it November 2nd and 3rd?
Yeah, probably shortly. You know, they had a, Julian Levin confirmed these tentative dates while I was away last week, so I don't have all that information about when they thought they'd put it out. But I think right now, they're trying to confirm those two dates.
And do you have an idea how long the training would be for the facilitators?
I think it is a half-day training, if I remember correctly. It's either a half-day or a full-day training, but I think it's a half-day training.
Okay.
Sounds great.
And of course, they want people who feel comfortable working with groups of students and facilitating group work with students, so.
Any questions on that?
Well, sorry, I have one more. So you're looking for facilitators from the community. Is that also going to include some of the teachers who might want to step forward, or no, it's just community?
You know, I think we talked about that, but felt that in other schools where they've done this, sometimes the teachers don't feel as comfortable doing it, or the students don't feel as comfortable with the, you know, with the teachers. So I think that they usually look for people who are not teachers.
Excellent. That makes sense.
Thanks. Now stop me at any time.
We have.
I appreciate that. I don't want to, you know, overwhelm you or go on and on, but I'm happy to answer any questions. So the bullying prevention and policies and procedures training will be October 17th. I mentioned that in the announcements. Director of Curriculum will do that, and that is for parents of students in grades 7 through 12. But again, there'll be a training, the tentative date is November, for parents of elementary Number four is update policies and procedures. So right now, we have, our partners have been the Anti-Defamation League School Committee, because you will eventually review and approve the policies and procedures, policies. We have a handbook committee composed of staff, students, and parents, and they're doing the initial work, and then the draft will go to the Student Council and the School Council for their feedback. And the update is, will involve revisions for the Code of Conduct, the cellphone policy, academic integrity, and dress code. And there will also be protocols for communicating to staff, students, and families after an incident. Bullying incident procedures and protocols for communicating policy and procedure updates to staff, students, and families. And that will all be presented to the School Committee on October 24th. Any questions about that?
Do you know when we might expect to have that in advance of the meeting for review?
Probably the Thursday before.
Okay.
Number five is develop a bias incident response protocol, and I think this speaks to your question, Marissa, and we can talk a little bit more about it. So this is about developing a protocol and reporting form to report incidents to administration. And again, we did some work earlier this year with the Anti-Defamation League, and the Director of Curriculum is, and the same group, actually, that's up here working on the policies and procedures, is looking at bias incident response protocols. And once the draft is completed, that will go to the Student Council and the School Council for review as well, and then we'll present them to School Committee. And so right now, you know, if there's a bias-motivated incident, it's reported, just like any other disciplinary incident, like a bullying incident, or any kind of disciplinary incident, and dealt with according to the policies in the current student handbook.
Okay. Yeah.
So on October 24th, that's when you believe that's going to be finished, but it won't be presented on that day to the School Committee?
No, it may be. We're hoping that it will be.
Okay.
Maybe Cindy can help me. For some reason, I'm having a hard time summarizing the question, which was perfectly eloquently worded, and now I'm having a hard time capturing it. But I guess the question was related to whether two students who are involved in that incident, will there be an opportunity for them to have some kind of mediation, so that way they're able to continue on with a, you know, a peaceful or healthy relationship?
Yes, certainly. So we have, you know, progressive discipline policies and procedures at school, and we, depending on the incident, the administration and guidance determine what the best approach would be. And oftentimes, it is mediation. So that is one of the protocols that's used when there's a bias-motivated incident.
Okay. The question, I think the question, too, following up was, would that be possible on the same day?
Well, within 24 hours.
Within 24 hours.
Good question.
Yes, typically, that happens clearly within 24 hours. We try to do it as quickly as possible, probably. Probably, the, well, the incident would be addressed immediately that day, or as soon as it was reported, mediation might take place on a following day. But there would be conversations with the students about the incident, you know, with the Assistant Principal, to try to get information on how it happened, why it happened, what the feelings were. So there's really a process, you know, that takes place.
Well, it can't always be within 24 hours, because if something happened on a Friday at the end of the day-
Business hours.
It would be the business hours of school, yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess I'm also curious is to, what would the role of the diversity, you might be speaking into this, diversity officer, would that person have, is that like, under their jurisdiction, let's say, would they have, would they be involved in that mediation, or is it just with the Vice Principal?
The answer would be, it depends.
Depends.
Yeah, it depends on what the incident is, and, you know, how serious it is, and, you know, I mean, there are just a lot of variables. But the diversity officer has been involved in a number of incidents and conversations more with students, you know, about things that have occurred this year.
But typically, that's the Vice Principal that would conduct that mediation?
Yeah.
But these protocols are still being worked on?
Yes. And it might be guidance as well, if it's a mediation that needs to occur, you know, once, if that's, if the determination is that mediation is what needs to occur as a result of the incident, it might be a guidance counselor who does that mediation. Convene a Stakeholder Advisory Committee is number six. There have been ongoing meetings with Dr. Sapphire DeYoung of the Collaborative to review applications and to determine two training dates for all committee members. Right now, the proposed dates are October 21st and 22nd, but they, there are still some things to iron out in terms of getting this committee together. So they're working through a process with Dr. DeYoung, which is what we anticipated, that there'd be a process with her guidance to help us, you know, choose the members of the committee and get the training for the committee work. So that's in progress.
At this point, do you have the number of volunteers that you're hoping for?
I just talked with our Curriculum Director today, and it appears that we, if we don't have the number, we're close to the number.
Okay. I imagine that that's, there's a majority of parents who have applied for that, but somebody asked me if it's also open to people from the community who don't have children in the schools.
I had that request, too, and I said that I thought that it really needed to be people who had a connection with our schools.
Okay.
Because it's really about that, our school culture. And so it would be parents and guardians and family members who would have that interest and connection.
Okay.
And it might be the same person who contacted me, and I said that another opportunity for that person would be the SPIRIT Program, facilitation.
Oh, yeah, you're right. That'd be a nice place to-
Yeah.
Because that person seemed to have skills that way.
Yeah, great. That's a good idea.
And let's see, okay, offer regular advisory periods for high school students. So there will be advisory facilitation training for staff, our high school staff, on December 4th, 2017. We're really trying to do a comprehensive training for these advisory, and a curriculum for the advisory program. And on December 11th, we will have the first all-school advisory period with ongoing planning for future advisories. And so as I understand it, there's going to be this advisory period that is interchanged with some cultural performances. Mr. Alvarez, I believe, our diversity club faculty member, is working on some performances to kind of be on the opposite of the advisory periods.
And do we know how often they're going to happen after the start of December 11?
We're working on that at this point. You know, we have contract obligations, and, you know, we have, you know, our hours of instruction that we need to make sure that we have in place, but we have several different ideas of how that might happen, and that's still in progress.
So would that be something that's going to be by class, by-
I think that-
You have decided, yeah.
Yeah, it will be by class, yes, for this advisory, yes.
And do you have any idea how long that would be, like, an advisory period?
This one, I'm not, I think, well, what they planned originally, and as I say, I wasn't here this week, was 45 minutes, and that, I think, was the goal. So I'm not sure if these are going to be 45 minutes, so I know that was the goal.
Likely by class.
And then the, excuse me, the last three are ones that are going to happen more during the year. The build capacity for the LEAP model, that would be embedded in district professional development. We haven't done any of that yet, but when we do, we'll give you those dates and what that would be. That's still in the planning stages. Number nine is conduct an annual audit of discipline records. We are currently putting in a system for making the recording of disciplinary incidents consistent across the district. They'll all be entered into Power School, and there's a new coding that's coming out from the state, so we will match the discipline records to the new coding, and so it will be easy to be able to analyze the data across the district and to give it to the auditor, the outside auditor, external auditor, for review at the end of the school year. And then the stakeholder survey, that will be in January and June of 2018, and we will work with the Collaborative to have them help us design a survey to be administered at those two points in the year, January and June. Get the feedback, which we'll share with the School Committee members.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And then on- And then on October 24th, there is that Department of Justice Conference.
Yes.
That we talked about the last meeting.
Yes.
Okay, so there's a lot going on.
Yes, it is.
And who's going to the October 24th?
That's the one in Worcester. Is that the one you're talking about? And I'm going to try to make sure that Cindy gets to go to that one.
I'm trying.
I put that on my list today, Cindy, and I'll make a call and see if I can't make sure that we arrange that. So, Principal Burke is going, I am going, Julianne Levin is going. I think Assistant Principal Welson is going as well. I believe Meredith Belice from the middle school. And, yeah, so I think at least those.
Who else?
Oh, the mayor. Who? The mayor? Yes, the mayor's, that's right, you did say, yes, you did say that. So, I, you know, I think it's going to be very worthwhile, and I think it's great that we're all there and we can hear it together and work on it together.
Yeah, I'm hoping you can clear that up. I've tried to get on.
I have it on my list for tomorrow.
I know, I know.
I'll see if I can.
And you were away, so.
I know, I'll see if I can talk to somebody about that.
Sounds great, thank you.
Excuse me. So now, do you want to look at my goals? So, after the work session that we had, I made some revisions to the goals based on your feedback. And Deb pointed out something that, you know, you had requested that I missed. I missed it in my notes and I missed it in Sue's notes, but we'll get to that when we, we'll just add that in. So, professional practice goal, my professional practice goal was to develop a deeper understanding of how to implement policies and practices to empower all learners in order to ensure equity in education in all our schools. We started working on that last year through the Inclusive Practices course that we took. And we're going to continue to work on that this year. One of the actions is to engage in a book study. Again, last year we did Lost at School. This year, we're going to do Building Equity. And Peter Gunn asked that we report out to the School Committee after we complete that book study on the topics that we've discussed, including the meaning of equity versus equality, because he believed that that was, you know, something important for us all to come to a common understanding of. Any questions on that? The first district improvement goal is student learning, and it is to ensure vertical alignment of mathematics curriculum and instruction, pre-K to grade 12, with a focus on aligning the standards for mathematical practices. Our MCAS data shows us that, you know, there's room for growth in our alignment of our mathematics curriculum and instruction. We particularly have, show dips when our students go from fourth grade to fifth grade and from eighth grade to ninth grade, which is fairly typical in any district when there's a transition time. But we want to see what we can do to strengthen that vertical alignment. So we're going to support transitions between those grades, four and five, and eight and nine, by developing vertical teams, and that would be teams of teachers, to examine current practices and make recommendations for identified needs. We're going to provide staff with professional development on the new revised frameworks. That's important, so that everybody understands that. We're going to begin transitioning the grades three through eight curriculum to online resources, meaning that they won't be totally online, but we're going to give our students in grades three through eight more online experiences in order to get them ready for the computer-based testing. And also, just because, you know, there's more and more online learning now. So we want to accustom our students to that early on. We're going to examine the new MCAS data that's coming out shortly. And to, we've got the embargo data now, but the other data will be coming out shortly, to determine strengths and challenges in standards and instructional strategies. And we're going to implement a math curriculum in preschool this year. So we're excited about that to continue to strengthen our math skills, pre-K to 12. So, the benchmarks for that are, you know, articulated here. And I think, the last one that you asked me to add was to report to the School Committee on interventions and progress over time. So we did a little bit of that earlier this year in looking at data and progress over time to see that we had actually moved more students into advanced as we had put in our goals. So, we'll do that for this and look at data over time in terms of particularly those transition areas. And, any questions on that goal? Goal three is climate and culture, goal two, rather. Is climate and culture, improve the climate and culture in our high school and in all schools in the district by enacting the action steps of the Superintendent's 10-point action plan and the memorandum of agreement between the East Hampton Public School District and the Office of the Attorney General of Massachusetts. And the actions are to, all actions designated for year one in both documents. The benchmarks will be ongoing reporting to School Committee on actions taken in chart form. You asked for it in chart form. Did this seem to work for you, Ms. Char?
Yes.
Is that what you were thinking of?
It's really nice.
Data on how administrators are communicating with the community and providing community members with opportunities for feedback. And data from January and end-of-year surveys. Any questions on that? And the last one, goal three, is school building project. Oh, wait a minute, you had a question on that one, didn't you? Oh, you're good, okay. District three is, our district improvement goal three is school building project to fully support and promote the school building project by fulfilling all NSBA requirements and ensuring the community is fully informed about the project and understands why it is the most cost-effective and educationally appropriate solution for the East Hampton Public Schools. And the actions are to meet all requirements and deadlines of the MSBA process. We've been doing that right along here and have some more deadlines coming up quickly. To provide ongoing communication with the community about the project. Just want to reiterate again that we have all kinds of information on our website. If you go to the drop-down menu, School Building Project, you'll find all kinds of information about the building project. We will be doing another forum in December. And there'll be more information coming out all along. And I also encourage you, if you have questions about the project, to email me. And we will get the answers for you. Data, rather, provide ongoing, I did that one. And number three, provide avenues for any community member to receive answers to any questions that arise. I guess I just did that too. But there are also, we're putting questions on the website and the answers. So if you have a question and you send it to us, you know, and it's a question that, you know, it seems like a lot of people are having, we'll put that on our website with the answers. So, but you can find some questions and answers already on the website. Any questions?
Well, I wish that we would have another forum before the election. I don't know if that's possible, but I think that it's a hot topic right now. And, I mean, for me, and I said this in that speech easy. I'm, I mean, I don't, this is going out on a limb and maybe being bold, but I'm going to vote for someone that is a strong supporter of this project, of the candidate that's a strong supporter. Because, yeah. I mean, I'm hearing a lot, and I think it's important that we all are on the same page. Yeah, so I don't know if that's possible.
I will ask, but we're actually having a meeting tomorrow. We did do a preferred schematic design presentation. I think I told you about that at the last meeting to the MSBA Board. And we had some conversations with them. They gave us some feedback. So, the architect is coming over tomorrow to meet with me and Dale Doran, our Director of Business Services, to look at the new model, the new design. And so that would be an excellent time to ask about the possibility of another forum.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, there's people that are asking, and I think it's just important that it's continuing the messaging. Because there is a lot of misinformation out there, and people make assumptions. And I just think, given that we're in an election year and people are voting, they're also wanting to vote, you know, being informed as well, so.
But I do think, though, that the media has really covered, the candidate you're speaking about, has really covered all of the candidates as to, you know, the stances on that particular issue.
Right.
So it's pretty clear about, you know, the support that our school building project is receiving.
Right, right.
And one, excuse me, one item that I want to reinforce here is that, you know, you'll see some projected costs for this project, but those are not the actual costs yet. And in fact, with our new changes to the design, it's going to lower that cost. So, you know, I know people are concerned about the cost, and it is a costly project. But it is, and in our forums, we've talked about why it's the most cost-effective. And clearly, I think everybody can understand why it's the most educationally appropriate, given the age of our schools and the condition of our schools. But it also is a good time to build, to do a new building project. MSBA is still giving out grants for building projects. And the rates are still reasonable. We don't know what they'll be so many years down the line. And whatever we, whatever the cost is now for a new building project, it's going to be that much more. Just even if, the cost of our high school, I don't know if you remember the figures, Karen, but if we were to do the same high school today, would be substantially more expensive than it was when we did it.
And even just comparing, anything, any new construction is always at your top dollar. Like even just comparing a new house.
Yeah.
You know, the cost of what the costs are, and construction costs are always going up. So, we're really very anxious about this project. This is extremely important, and we've been trying to get the word out in any way, shape, or form. And I do think that the forums that we have had, the people that attended, were, you know, were the public, and were very positive. And the questions were really directly related to really good questions of PowerPoints. And we've received a lot of positive feedback on this. So, I think one of the most important things too, to get, to keep getting across to people is the, whether you rehave your buildings or whether you do the project that we're presenting, this is actually more financially feasible.
Right.
So.
And here's what I'm worried about, is that you're not going to be around, right?
I'm still, I'm still a member of the School Building Committee.
Awesome, okay. Because I know you've worked so hard, you both have worked so hard to push this through and get it even in front of the state, and I just like.
Thank you. It's a really, it's a really good committee. Everybody's very dedicated, and I think you're only going to see, you know, even more so. But it's, again, it's important that people do not get the incorrect information. And if any questions, just contact us.
Okay, very good. Oh, for the goals. Okay, would there be a motion to approve Superintendent Fallsby's goals?
Um, I'm, can I, I wasn't here for that meeting.
Well, that's up to you. You see them?
Yeah, and I could see them before.
So that's totally up to you, Casey. Did someone make a motion? Who made the motion? Oh, thank you.
I'll second.
I didn't hear it. Okay, there is a motion to approve Superintendent Fallsby's goals for the year 2017, 2018. It's been seconded. Any last comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, we have warrants and payroll.
I move to approve the school payroll dated October 12th, 2017 in the amount of $475,676.52.
Second.
There's a motion. It's been seconded to approve the school payroll dated October 12th, 2017 in the amount of $475,676.52. All those in favor? Motion passes.
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated October 12th, 2017 in the amount of $53,735.56.
Second.
There's a motion. It's been seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated October 12th, 2017, in the amount of $53,735.56. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Do you have minutes?
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee meeting. This School Committee meeting was September 26th, 2017. Actually, we have two. So this one is the School Committee Work Session, September 26th, 2017, and the Regular Session, September 26th, 2017.
Do they have to be separate, Sue?
No.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the minutes.
I seconded it.
Thank you, Karen. For the September 26th Regular Session and Work Session. That is seconded. Is there a question?
Oh, I wasn't there, so I'm wondering if I can vote or?
You can. You don't have to abstain.
Okay.
You, you can vote, you'll prove if you want to. Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes.
Well, then, can I vote on the goals? No. Yes, yes. Can I, I vote on the goal?
Yeah. The Superintendent's goals?
Yeah, one and one.
Can you amend it and then, yes, on the goals? At this point, I should know, right? It's been almost two years.
Right, it's always great to ask.
Are we voting? We're amending it?
That's up to the committee.
Yeah. Do you want to do it here? All right, so there's, there needs to be an emotion.
Okay, motion to approve the Superintendent's goals for 2017, 18.
And it's been seconded?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
It's unanimous. All right, approved. Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn.
So may.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.